I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
These chairs are rolling. Because I know they're.
Okay, well, I've been notified that the planner is going to be about fifteen minutes late or so. So we'll go ahead and continue on. Madam Secretary, would you read a roll call, please?
Joel King.
Here.
Mark Smith.
Here.
Eric Snuff.
Here.
Linda Garrick.
Here.
Secretary Lundie.
Here.
Vice Chair Benz.
Here.
Chair Jean Lord.
Here.
Okay, is there any announcements or correspondence?
None.
Okay, okay, we'll get on to the order of business. Need the approval of the agenda. Has anybody got any changes or remarks? Okay. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. We have a second. Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we have the approval of the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four special meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or remarks to make?
Just that in the roll call and where there's names of who's here or not, it says Secretary Snuff, who is now, I'm the secretary, so.
You'll make that change?
And Joel wasn't here either.
I wasn't there, but everywhere it talks about a call, roll call, says I was absent.
Yeah, you're right. This was a special meeting? I guess we canceled the week before.
It was special? Well, there was a special meeting, the nineteenth. I believe the twelfth was canceled or delayed.
We postponed it.
Okay.
We wouldn't have had a forum.
Okay, any other changes? Pauline, you'll make that change? Thank you.
If you guys ever see those little typos, feel free to email me and I can change them right away.
Okay, if there is no changes to be made other than those, because we can hear a motion to accept the minutes.
I make that motion with those changes? With the changes?
I have a motion. Okay, we have a second?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, passed. Okay, our next item is ordinance discussion, reviews, and updates.
What kind of thing, right?
Pardon me?
We need him, right?
Well, the first one, I guess we can, we can start talking about things if anybody has any comments about deleting the PUDs or we think we need to change some open space or review open space. So I don't know if anybody has any comments for PUDs or, or open space review?
I was wondering exactly what we were looking at in terms of, is normally I would expect to see, for example, there's a recommended change, something like a legal black line off to the side, indicating that was the area that was a recommended change. Are we talking about deleting this entire thing?
I think we'd like.
The board sent it to the planning commission to delete the entire PUD ordinance. The open space is as it was adopted many years ago, so that one, I think you guys should read it with a fine-tooth comb and decide that if we need to change any words. So we're only at a discussion point with the open space and that one has to stay in the zoning ordinance.
Well, I read the open space and I thought it was fine. I didn't see anything that was necessary to change unless there's a recommendation about something. I think the open space looks good.
So the, we're on page, there's a page number. The page has the, the table of zoning districts and reduction of minimum lot size for the district. About, about four pages in.
Zoning district?
Sorry? Open space?
That's part of.
Is that part of the, is that part of, is it part of project design standards?
It's PUD.
Is that different from?
PUD is different from open space.
The PUD is a section twenty-five, point oh-two regulations that we're looking at deleting. So those pages go on quite a bit. So if you go to pass the minutes, the first one is where we're looking at the open space.
Okay.
Up in the top right, it says for E two A. Yeah, you're right. And then the next page starts the PUD regulations.
Twenty-five over two, it's regular. Yeah.
Is there a reason for deleting? Is there something that's been brought up that we want to delete that?
Delete the PUDs? I, I think part of the problem is a conflict, a conflict with the health department.
Well, Pete, seeing that I really don't want to talk much, PUDs I would think are more for city or higher density. We don't have that in Addison Township and as Jean says, we don't have sewers. So why are we going to promote and keep that in our ordinance when we don't really have the areas to accommodate PUDs? PUD is an optional way of zoning where it's open space. The state says every municipality must have the open space ordinance. So that is the one that we should be really looking at because it's state mandated, whereas the PUD is an optional item.
Those PUDs are often used to combine uses. So if you have like a residential area and you want to throw some storefronts in there and do a lot of things like, I don't know if you're familiar with where CVS is and Legorian, they've got condos in the back and on the fronts like a strip mall. That's typically how we see PUDs used in my experience. We don't really have that kind of thing around here. Can I start with that zoning too?
I know one or the other, I don't know that it's a conflict, a controversy is that, you know, the, they usually ask for a smaller lot and then have an open space inside of that PUD. And the conflict is where the health department gets involved because they do not want you to build like a three-bedroom home on a lot smaller than an acre because of sanitation. So the septic systems, they want you to have at least an acre appropriate.
That was the big problem with the development on Lake George and Lakeville Road.
Lakeville Road.
And that didn't go through as a PUD, whatever you call it.
PUD.
Yeah. They were going to use all kinds of grouping and spaces and.
Right.
But even given those limitations, if you had something zoned suburban farms, which is what, two and a half acres?
Two and a half acres.
And they wanted to take them down to one acre, which would comply with the health department and will leave more open space for public use in that development. Is it something we should outright delete or should we modify it?
Open space allows for that, Mark. And that's why.
It does.
That's why the state came in and said, everybody has to have this. So in essence, we now have two, whereas the PUD also allows, if you wanted to, you can throw in commercial. Open space allows for going half the size. So PUD is an optional thing, so we already have it.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That helps clarify for me not being familiar with it.
So Pauline, I hate to throw you into this, but is there anything that in the open space preservation that we should be concerned about or should we wait with the planner?
I did have a question for the planner and I wanted him to respond because I don't know the proper response. So in our ordinance of open space, we have ag listed, RE listed, SE listed, SF listed, and the R1. R1 is a one-acre zoning and according to open space, you can go half its size. Well, the health department for new development wants the one acre. I would, one, ask the planner, do we need to do that? And two, have him come up with language that would address it if he sees a problem.
So would we, well, I guess maybe he would suggest that we remove R1 from that?
I don't know. He, and that's why I referred to him. He should come up with, one, is it an issue in our ordinance to have it when we already know that you need one acre? Two, what language should be inserted in there? So he's going to have to address that. Other than that, I didn't really see anything. I was, I didn't have the opportunity to go through the PUD to see if anything from the PUD should be inserted into the open space.
Open space.
But I think the open space kind of just covers it off. Half of the underlying zoning, which is what the state requires.
It's PUD.
So that's the minutes.
No, it's one page of the plan.
Oh.
Under open spaces, could you go farther than half? So you said the minimum for health department is one acre, suburban estates is five acres? Is that correct?
Yes.
Rural estate is five acres, so they would go two and a half. Suburban estates is three acres, so they would go one and a half. SF is two acres, so they would go one.
One, but so rural estates at five, could you allow them one?
Why?
Well, conceptually, let's say you have fifty acres that you're going to make ten five-acre parcels on and instead you make ten one-acre parcels and have forty acres of public space as opposed to twenty-five acres?
Me, no. People come out here because they want their country here. So what happens to that forty acres? Usually people fight over who's going to do what on it, so, no.
Well, the, the PUD, that's why that table caught my eye because right now the only thing that sets a minimum lot size is the PUD.
No. The open space sets a minimum lot size because law states that it can't be, it has to be half.
It's, that the green space has to be half. It doesn't state that the developed space has to be half.
How this is written, it's going to be half. The PUD does go down.
Open space shall comprise at least fifty percent of the, of the subject area. So you could have a, a two-acre spot, decide you're going to have an acre, one-half acre, for whatever reason, one-half acre place of your house on it and make the other acre and a half green space because that would comply with the at least fifty percent of, of open space.
You're not following me a hundred percent, Joel?
Okay.
You have two acres.
You have two acres. You have two acres, you were, you were zoned SF suburban farms. Your lot happens to be two acres. You decide you want to build on it, but you only want a half an acre to build on. If you were restricted by the PUD, you would have a minimum lot size of fifty percent of those two acres or one acre to build upon. But if you're not restricted by the PUD because the PUD's been removed, your restriction is now paragraph two Bravo, open space shall comprise at least fifty percent of the subject site outside. So you could theoretically go for a half an acre to build on and open space an acre and a half.
You can't go to a half an acre because you're not allowed to by way of health department. Number two, you have to come up with a parallel plan in order to come up with your density. So you're probably not going to have such a smaller lot size anyways.
That's not going to be allowed by the health department. They won't issue you a permit.
Okay.
So that's the restriction.
That's the restriction.
Pardon me?
That's the limiting factor.
That's the limiting factor, yes.
And if we're here as a rural oasis, why do we keep talking about these tiny lot sizes?
To the best of my knowledge, the, the people in the, the people in this community want to keep it rural. Okay? And I think by doing some of this, you know, we're letting people build on like you, your idea there, Mark, you know, make a one-acre parcels and have forty acres of open space. Everything's kind of cramped in and then it's not really rural anymore. And before long, somebody's going to fight, fight that.
Get the fifteen.
And then they're going to want, you know, forty more houses on that parcel. So I think.
That was the argument.
I think as long as I've been on here and as long as I've known, well, there was a survey done many years ago and the people wanted it kept rural. And so that's been our philosophy that that's, and it's part of our job as a planning commission, you know, to kind of honor the desires of the people of this community. And so that's why we've tried to keep it rural all this time. So, and, you know, keep the density down a little bit. So people, I guess, keep it in their minds that this is, you know, kind of a mecca, I guess, if that's what you want to say, you know? So, but that, that's been the premise here, okay?
That's what we're here to protect.
Pardon me?
That's what we're here to protect.
Yes.
And I mean, I don't think it's to the point yet where some people have made the comment that you're here and now you want to close the doors and that's not completely the truth, you know? We're just asking that people kind of build, you know, go along with the basis of the community and build on a little bit bigger piece of property, that's all. It's to their benefit too, so, in my, my opinion, so.
Hey, Justin.
Hello.
We just, we just said I'm adjourned for meeting.
Oh.
You can go now. Well, we were just discussing PUDs.
Yes.
And open spaces. So I think there were a few questions for you here.
Absolutely.
If you'd like to start there and then we'll kind of go, go from there. Okay? I believe one of the questions was like the R1 residential?
Yes.
Where it's, it's fifty percent and it says you can go a half acre?
So.
But the, but the health department restricts you at one acre parcel, you know?
As far as your septic?
Yes.
Correct. So yesterday I was in conversation with Pauline about that and I think it's something that we need to coordinate with our engineer to craft language to an ordinance. I know there's an opportunity or you're looking at the opportunity to change your ordinance related to private septic systems and private wastewater systems. And I think it would be incumbent upon us to have some language that is more civil engineering developed as it relates to, to those systems, especially pointing to the requirements from the county health department. So as a township, we don't want to have an ordinance that gives a greater weight than what is required by the county, similarly to the state in certain instances. So I think it would be worthwhile, I know this language comes directly out of Act one seventy-seven, and I was talking to Carmen, my partner, about it today, whether or not there was any conflict between your current PUD ordinance, your open space ordinance and preservation, as well as it relates to Act one seventy-seven and then Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Because the Zoning Enabling Act tended to change some of the way that we refer to these open space developments as cluster developments. They, they have different names, but the provisions are similar. Fifty percent required open space. So I, I'm comfortable with the idea of, of taking the PUD out, even though it is referred to in the Zoning Enabling Act, but I think we definitely have to have that protection language in there that says for any septic system or sanitary collection system, that at a minimum it has to meet all county health department standards, all department, energy, Great Lakes, and environment permitting standards, and, and no less than that, if that makes sense.
So what you're saying, you, you would like to meet with the engineer or the, or engineer and then draft, draft something from there?
That's it. I would be happy to sit down with him and, and get his perspective on what he thinks protective language would look like. And we could also go through the township council or the attorney on that. But I think it's, in my eyes, there's zoning language, which is related to dimensional use, property, those types of things. And then there is design standards, civil engineering language. And I think in this case, we want to have design, civil engineering language that very clearly states, not only are the dimensional requirements of the property one acre, but these are the design standards that it must be designed and created to. And if you cannot meet those standards, then you cannot move forward with the development.
As opposed to this open space document that says just, we shall meet the minimum public health requirements?
Yes, it, it just needs to be, even though it says meets the public, the minimum public health requirements, I think we can hone that in specifically to those requirements that need to be met and the permitting process for meeting those requirements.
And that enables us to delete the PUD?
Yes, I, I, you don't have to have the PUD section. The zoning, the Zoning Enabling Act in some instances is permissive and some instances is prescriptive. So it did prescribe that conditional rezoning is something that is allowable. It did prescribe that communities could authorize use variances. Doesn't mean that they have to, but they could. And then it also provides permissive in the case where it says a community can't have a PUD and under a PUD, you can have open space preservation, cluster, style, condominium developments, those types of things. And, and so it's not an absolute requirement that you have to have a PUD ordinance.
Should we wait till after you talk to the engineer before we delete it or does it make any?
No, I think it's separate conversations. I think it's more about aligning them and making sure, one, there absolutely is no conflict between the Zoning Enabling Act and Act one seventy-seven of two thousand and one, which is the Open Space Preservation Act. And then two, how do we want to carefully craft and tighten that language around those private systems? Because we, we can draft a language with, with the support of the attorney. I just want to make sure that I have Matt's blessing and, and put the correct, appropriate terms in that the engineers would like to see.
Okay.
So you'll look into that and draft something for us?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Pauline?
Yes, while you were out, Joel brought up a good point. I think we're covered, but I'm not a hundred percent sure now that I've been thinking about it. So it's half of the underlying zoning has to be open space. So in my mind, I'm thinking that means if you're ag, you're going to have five acres open space and five acre lot. There is nowhere in here that your lot has to be five acres.
Correct.
So we should actually put that table in like we have it in the PUD so we're covered? Because I, when Joel asked that, I originally thought we're covered, but I'm reading this, we're not. They could actually go from a ten to a one acre lot.
Correct, and, and a number of communities will put a minimum size requirement for cluster development, open space development, PUD. A lot of communities I've seen in rural areas do a twenty acre minimum. I've seen a ten acre minimum. And, and what the provision is saying, well, it says fifty percent. The intent of the, the law when it was envisioned was that you could take a twenty acre property and do that development on two acres or three acres. As long as you are preserving fifty percent of that property as untouched open land, then, then you qualify. And, and the intent of the, the preservation is a lot of cases were, were provided with some sort of density bonus or development bonus for that preservation. And, and again, the, it's permissive in the Zoning Enabling Act, it's not prescriptive. So we can adjust that.
So I would like for the planning commission to have that discussion. Do you want half of the underlying zoning, so a ten is going to be a five? A five is going to be two and a half and so on? Or where are we going?
Well, I, I think if it was, if the underlying is still ten, if the, if it's ten, at fifty percent, that's just saying that the actual household development would have to be on the five acres. Yeah, so you're right. I think it's, if you want to make a minimum number of where these are permitted, I think that's well within your reach.
A good catch, Joel.
I have a question, Justin. You just said that the intent was that there'd be a, a bonus density for doing some of this?
So there, there are.
We removed it in our PUD.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't have it here.
Okay.
But when, when the Zoning Enabling Act was recodified in two thousand and six, they wanted to, at the time, there, there was a lot of things that happened between two thousand and two thousand and six. You had this Act one seventy-seven in two thousand and one, you had the PA one sixteen, which is the Farmland Preservation Act, and you had the Zoning Enabling Act recodification. And, and all of that was intended to provide some level of incentive to rural areas to still allow development while maintaining environmental integrity or farmland integrity. And, and so through that process, they introduced the idea of density bonuses or incentives to the developer to, I guess, eat the cost of not building out to their full capacity, even though they were getting the, the same amount of units or twenty percent is a number that I've seen a lot, a twenty percent increase in units or density to preserve that fifty percent. You don't have that right now and you don't have to have that in there. And as the clerk noted, it's not in there at this point. But that was, that was kind of how they were hanging the carrot over the heads of the developers to try to get them to buy down these three different bills that all came out between two thousand and one and two thousand and six.
So if we were to add a chart like that, how could we make it, I don't know if it's most restrictive or?
So the, the best thing would be, in my mind, is to prescribe a minimum acreage in which the open space could, preservation could happen. Second, identify that the specific districts, so if you only want an agriculture, rural residential and suburban farm, then, then we'd put that in here, just like it's identified suburban farms, R1, suburban estates. So let's, let's continue to identify those districts, maintain that those districts are the underlying zoning districts and those dimensional standards still apply. But if you're at a twenty acre minimum or a ten acre minimum, then you do have the opportunity to go through this open space development process. And, and so it would, it's almost like an overlay, but, but. I know, I know, it's another layer. It definitely is another layer.
If the statute requires R1 and we don't show R1 in our breakout of what can be done at fifty percent, do we risk it being invalid?
So that would be the question I'd want to ask the attorney. But really, the statute itself, 177, isn't prescribing which districts that you have to put this in. That's written into your own ordinance. So we can still have that discussion and choose which districts we would like it to be in. We can still set, like I said, the minimum size standards and the qualifying standards to qualify for this open space preservation. So I would confirm that with Attorney Davis, but I don't believe that your statute totally held to the districts that you currently have in there.
So is there information that you need for us or a suggestion you'd like from us tonight for this?
The biggest thing for me would be is similar with the clerk brought up is, do we want to have a minimum size? Are we comfortable with 10 acres? Do we want it to be as low as five acres? Do we want to set it at 20 acres? I think the township through your master plan has clearly indicated the desire to preserve environmental integrity, rural quality of life. And so if there is a number that you would like to discuss, that there would be consensus with, that would be big guidance to us. We don't necessarily have to have it this evening, but that would be something definitely to think about and provide some clarity for.
Is that a decision or recommendation we'd like to make tonight, or do we want to think about it for a moment?
Yeah, I think it's probably something we need to think about. I mean, how, what would be a recommendation to have the lowest density? Would it be on the larger parcels or would it be something in the mid-range? So if we're saying we have to allow for some kind of reduction in, with it, and this would be like an example of contract rezoning or something like that?
Conditional rezoning?
Condition, this would come into play. So we are looking at something where somebody's going to come in and buy a large parcel and want to do something. I don't think, well, I guess it depends on what it's on. I don't know what properties that we have that are large and what areas that this could be impacted by. I mean, mostly everybody's, I mean, what is not built? So that's where my thoughts are. I guess I need to think about it. When we look at a big development, you know, what big tracts of land could be impacted and what zoning districts are left?
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that. Could we maybe just review the maps that we have available right now as to where the big dots are?
That's your recommendation. And that's good, Mark. Any comment?
If I maybe feel just a little bit different than Lynn and Eric, then I think we should ask the planner to go forward with the engineer and the township attorney and create that language. And we should create that graph that's half of each one of these and remove R1 if we aren't statutorily required to have R1 in there. And then we can modify from there. But if we don't start, then we just kick the can down the road, so to say. What we're doing is putting together something for us to review again and maybe adopt or make some minor changes to, rather than starting all over again next month or the month after.
So I think, I think what we have here in this case is, is two separate items. And I think the item that we'll be working with the engineer and the attorney on, one is, two, going back to the top of the agenda, the community waste water utility systems and making sure that that language specifically provides civil language around where those are permitted, how they're permitted, and the guidelines that they have to follow regarding, or following Oakland County Health Department as well as Department of Energy, Great Lakes and Environment.
We haven't gotten to that discussion yet.
That's what we're talking about, the septic piece, a minimum of one acre. So that's what I'm saying. This is kind of two separate items. So we could definitely update the open space preservation by, we can take the PUD language out and then amend this to make, you know, to take the R1 out. But essentially, what I really wanted to make sure with the open space is, do we want to define it even deeper and have a specific acreage per size requirement? And I can provide some language to you from other rural communities where we've worked with where they've said, in order to have a PUD, you have to have a minimum of 20 acres. Or to have an open space development, you have to have a minimum of 20 acres or something along that line. And then the other piece of this is making sure through Attorney Davis that there is no conflict between Act 177 and the zoning enabling act, where the zoning enabling act is permitting cluster developments and open space preservation through a PUD. And I want to make sure that it is Attorney Davis's opinion that open space preservation and PUDs are not, I guess materially bound together. And it's not my opinion that they are, but given the two acts, 177 and the zoning enabling act, that would be the piece that I want clarification with the attorney on as it relates to open space.
Jennifer, any comments? Your feelings on?
As far as open spaces go, I understand, I would just say, does that, if we got rid of the R1, I just want to understand that with our master plan, areas that might be an acre or less, if that would affect them adversely, I guess, to take that out of here?
Not much. Based on your master plan, the majority of your township is, the future land use map, it's a little different than the zoning map reflects. There are similarities, but your overall future land use map is lots of agriculture, lots of rural residential, lots of suburban farms and rural state. So I don't think that you would have a major impact on R1.
But I would say there was R1.
Yeah.
Out there though. I realize the majority of it is big acreage, but.
So would you prefer to wait?
I don't want to wait. I mean, I just want to know if that was something that would impact, you know, those that have less than an acre are looking at, that are even available less than an acre.
The spirit and intent of this ordinance is generally for those acres or those properties that are multiple acres. If it's just a single acre.
Would you ask for a variance or something?
I don't see any purpose, to be honest. Developers now, so for a good example, town home developers, in order to do a successful and profitable town home development, they need 16 units an acre. And so under this ordinance, that would take them down to 16 units or 32 units and a half acre. And it just wouldn't make sense. So I would, I would think this ordinance is really aimed at those five, 10, 40, 100 acre properties to try to preserve those spaces from future development. And so that's what I would really focus on.
Joel, any comment?
I'm a big fan of rural nature of the community. And I don't like leaving the potential for having development of less than an acre simply to the public health requirements, which could change independently of us. So I would like to see something, something in there setting a minimum. And even if it's eliminating the, limiting the R1 language and open space preservation, that would do it for me.
Carol?
I think, based on, we just, not wait, but I can go ahead with the engineer and see what the proposal would be in line with.
Not make a recommendation tonight?
We absolutely don't have to have one tonight. We can bring this back to your next meeting. And this is, from our perspective, this was a discussion. And to get you up to speed on what our thoughts were, and we're happy to bring a template back to you, whether it's tweaks to this or a couple other options to look at. We definitely do not need to have an answer tonight.
Do we have to delete the other tonight?
No, we'd have to hold a public hearing on that.
Okay. That's what I was listing in the conversation.
Well, I guess everybody that knows me, I don't like putting things off too much.
Yeah.
I kind of agree with Mark. I'd like us to give you at least a base to go off of.
Sure.
And we can make changes to that later on.
I agree.
But I would, I would prefer to make some sort of recommendation tonight. But in a democratic, in a democratic society that we're in here, I just assume if we could raise hands, who would like to give it tonight and who would not? Can we, can we do that?
Yeah, I mean, we agree with the next steps are.
Yes.
Right? So the vote would be that we agree with the next steps?
Yes.
To forge ahead?
Yes.
I'm in for that.
Yeah.
I think I agree too. We do want to see what the next language that you're proposing, but there are some blanks that we need to fill in maybe in our next discussion.
Okay.
A little more research, okay?
And based on the comments a moment ago that we need a public hearing to remove the PUD, I don't think we'd want to do that until we have the open spaces one finalized and done. So we can say, we're removing this, but we have this in its place and it's all set, finalized, approved by legal, everything else.
Yeah. I would, I would, looking at your current schedule of regulations, agriculture is minimum lottery of 10 acres, rural estate is five acres, suburban estate is three acres. To be honest, I wouldn't go any less than that. I would even, you know, you might want to even consider taking out suburban farms. When we're talking about a preservation of 50% of the land, to have a quality development or an impactful development is, these are trying to create as preserving it. Again, when you get down to, if we're preserving 50% of two acres, now we're back down to that one acre. And if there's wetlands or other things going on in that site, is the septic going to work? It's 50/50. Just thoughts.
Okay. Well, I guess what we're recommended is go ahead with some language, bring it back to us and we'll just kind of go from there.
Okay.
Language that heeds our concerns for maintaining good plot sizes in rural nature.
Correct. And my guess is there's not going to be a lot of tweaks to this by the time Attorney Davis and I go through it. But we will provide a good template here.
Okay. If nobody has anything else, we'll move on to Plan B.
Do we have to make that official or?
I don't think we have to make it official tonight. I think this is more for just discussion and maybe to kind of point and then to write direction here.
So I have B, is similar, not directly related to the conversation we just had, but similar. It would be the township's preference to not permit private sanitary systems that would serve a commercial nature in an extent. And then also make sure that we honor, as in the open space act, the, the health department requirements as well as the Eagle requirements. And so again, that was something that we wanted to bring to your attention this evening to look at the existing community waste water utility systems and what that states. You can see essentially now in Article 4, the proposed, or it says review. It's pretty short in language. And the question is, is can we just ban them outright? Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
No, we're saying that we want sanitary sewers for more than, for more than that one dwelling unit.
Correct. Correct. So not banning it outright because you're essentially allowing, you know, septic for those residential dwelling units that meet those design standards, but not a septic system that would serve a multiple.
Like a 30, 30-ounce bill.
Correct.
Make the mess of the goal.
In fact, it was interesting. And I'm working on amendments to the Land Division Act currently. We had a call with Eagle a couple of weeks ago and they were talking about instances now where municipalities are being held liable for these private systems where a developer will come in and say, let us build our 20 home subdivision. We'll put in our own wastewater treatment facility. And then when that facility goes bad, the township or the community is all responsible. So Eagle's even not very happy about this.
Even though the health department has approved that?
So they're currently not, not permitted through Eagle at the state or through the health department. They're just not in favor of them.
So is this something that we can recommend to the township board that we want this place to be reviewed by legal or what are we doing with this?
At this point, if you're happy with the language that's here, we can set a public hearing, have a public hearing your next regular scheduled meeting and then go to the board. No?
Legal would have to review it before you go to public hearing, thank you.
Okay. Forgive my naivety, but we don't have any multifamily zoning in the township. We have nothing smaller than R1?
No, we have multiple.
We do, we do have.
Yeah. How would that work if they couldn't do a wastewater system?
I don't have the heading in front of me, but it talks about it has to be approved by the health department. So it's already addressed in there and I don't have it in front of me.
It's already existing too.
Correct.
The restriction here would be no new ones.
That's my question. Do we have vacant multifamily zoning that is not developed in the township? If we do, then this precludes that and that zoning is off the table.
Well, and again, this is specific to
It's addressed.
Facilities that are owned by non-governmental entities. So if the township has water and sewer at the site, this is not going to affect the property at all. This is specifically, for an instance, of a developer proposing to put in a private sanitary system.
This township has no water or sewers or?
No water anywhere here.
I can't pull it up on my phone, but if you would go to those zoning districts, it already talks about the sanitation in the districts currently. Or I will print it out and send it to you. No, I'm not going to speak to it when it's not in front of me.
I understand that. But then it sounds like it's still in conflict, even though that exists for them. This said is no, you can't do it if it's, unless the township.
I don't think there'll be a conflict.
Any other questions?
Would that also include commercial development as far as like golf courses or, you know, other, maybe something like a banquet hall, you know, if they can?
No, this is specifically referring to dwelling units?
Just dwelling units, okay.
As proposed here under Ordinance 24.
Okay.
So again, we can send this to the attorney and see if it impacts on multifamily?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Can't hear you.
I said, so we can have the attorney look at this and see if there's any concerns as Marcus brought up with the multifamily?
I believe so, yes.
That would be the next step.
And then review it next month? Is that what you're thinking?
I mean, I don't know what his schedule is, so yes, I will definitely send it to him.
Okay.
Are we going to include business that they would have to have a regular septic system?
I think I'd like to see what the attorney recommends on it. So this is for a dwelling unit. So if anything commercial, that would be a question. And then if there were a whole bunch of apartment buildings, how would that work?
So we will provide, we'll provide some clarity.
I'm sure there's, as far as sanitary systems on some of those, like commercial or multi, there's different sanitary systems that are being developed all the time, you know, new systems that do not need the area that the older systems use. But I would like that, I mean, we do have, we do have multiple and office. And I would like to see that addressed. I don't believe there's going to be water and sewer here. Well, I'll just say in my lifetime. So, but I would like that addressed.
I think this was more about having multi, like cluster homes and then having applied in wastewater. So if we could.
And, you know, I think it's more of a multi, multi dwelling subdivision where there's a treatment plan involved.
Right. Maybe that's what this is about.
And.
With the potential to not be maintained after the fact or?
Right. And if it's improperly maintained, I mean, I know that the health department does, you know, overlook that.
We do, so it's Section 420. We do, so it's section four twenty, under the zoning ordinance, talks about sewage disposal outside prairies. Talks about health department standards and meeting that, uh, health department standards. And, and again, there's also state standards. So to the extent that this connects to section four point two zero, as well as how that might impact land uses of the township, that's, that's what we'll get to the bottom of.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Okay. Move on to C, pocket parks.
So again, um, we have some language here, uh, under article two, definition, pocket park is a small park accessible to the general public. While the locations, elements and uses of the pocket parks may vary, the common defining characteristic of the park is its small size and low impact. Then under article four, uh, they shall be considered and allowed use in all zoning districts. The township encourages areas of recreation that provide for safe outdoor area or relaxing area and activity with low impact use and minimal traffic. Pocket parks of private ownership, a site plan review is required and should be included with a development plan. The applicant must demonstrate safety concerns and low impact use. So, uh, putting that into context, uh, if you think about a, a condo association or something along that line, where, again, going back to our open space ordinance, whereas they're dedicating a, a private piece of acreage for the specific use of those that are member or approved that develop. And then secondly, the pocket park is publicly owned, must be approved by the board, uh, again, with plans demonstrating safety concerns and low impact use. And then all parks must be closed at no later than ten P M. Uh, so again, we wanted to, to put this before you and, and see if you had any thoughts, concerns, ideas, changes.
What was the inspiration to bring this up?
I may defer that one to the, to the board.
Yeah. There might be a park across the street and it's not appropriately zoned and you don't have an area in our ordinance that if somebody who did have a condo, they couldn't even, it's not even addressed. So it came up at a board discussion and it would be nice to have pocket parks throughout the township if somebody chose to do so.
So it's a, it's a similar idea again to the open space, uh, but it's far, uh, far more concentrated and, and as indicated, provides, provides a process for allowing that both in private and public spaces.
We currently don't have that in our.
It's, uh, I, I guess it could be considered an institutional use of public land, but again, there's no provisions right now requiring or outside of deed restriction and a, and a bylaw on condominium development. And, and so this just kind of provides some clarity to it, adds it and, and puts it in a clear space.
Is it reasonable to add language in the private portion of it at a minimum that exists in the open space language? It says such open space shall remain perpetually in an undeveloped state by means of a conservation easement as defined in, I won't read the whole thing.
So if it was a condominium development, site condominium development, that would be deed restricted and perpetually through their master deed and their bylaws. I can't, and so the open space situation probably could apply, but again, there are so few developers that are doing traditional platted subdivisions anymore under the Land Division Act. They're all going into site condominium. So it's, it's going to force it back into that master deed by law situation. I think this provides a, uh, another element to, if we wanted to put it in there, that it's a permanently dedicated easement, uh, recorded with the county or a permanently recorded deed, I think that's fine. It, it's not going to hurt, uh, the process. It, it just gives it another point of clarity.
I mean, conceivably somebody could put one in in ten years, take it out if they didn't have to keep it in perpetuity.
Right, similar to PA one sixteen with the final preservation, conservation easement, that's, you can definitely require a conservation easement or ask for one.
With a conservation easement, can you, um, develop it into a park?
I don't think so.
I don't think you can, I don't know for sure.
So conservation would work, but if it's part of the site plan, um, to have a pocket park and however that's designed, wouldn't that be a violation of the site plan if they discontinued it in some way?
If, hell, if, if it's a change in use or a change in intensity, depending on what the specific changes are, if it triggers your approval or a violation of your approval, then yes. Air conditions of your approval, I'm sorry.
I like the idea of having this in the ordinance for special circumstances. Most of the pocket parks I've seen have been in subdivisions, so.
They've been in subdivisions, so you see them in small, small towns and villages.
Yes.
Um, where, where trusts have turned over, uh, land to the municipality to do a little park, a veterans park or you name it.
Right.
And, and it was a, for, for ages, it was just a concept of, of traditional planning and design. You know, that if you go to Chicago, Washington, DC, Savannah, if you go to Savannah, Georgia, every other block is a pocket park. You know, so it, it's, it's a longstanding principle of planning. We just want to make sure that we can address it in the appropriate manner.
It's a little different for us because most pocket parks are in high density areas where we got low density and we wanted a pocket park. So I think, um, size, um, when we say small park, what does, what does small mean? I think that should be, is it two acres?
I generally, based on experience, say acre or less, usually.
I think you could almost call this a park, park out here.
Well, that's my, my thought, you know, if we're calling them pocket parks and we're saying that they, um, are allowed use in all zoning districts like that, I think if we're looking at them on a development standpoint, when we're looking at how big of a development, is there a requirement to have them or are they just allowed?
Well, you, you could put that in your language, in your open space language or, um, condominium language that, that requires a portion of the space to be dedicated to the master deed. As, and condo act requires it, you have to have condominium, you have to have the condominiums. And so again, that's, that's already implicit to the condominium act, but it doesn't hurt to reassert it through, through your ordinances.
Any other questions?
Nobody have a point of clarification, because we talked about a conservation easement that would not work, but that's not the only mechanism by which this is restricted. That is one of, the others are a plat dedication, a restricted covenant or other legal means acceptable to the township board.
Correct. You could have deed restriction, um, like you said, dedicated permanent easement. The conservation easement, I guess, was the first thing that popped in my head as a similarity, but yeah, you're absolutely right.
And there's no guarantee of maintenance in the future. A lot of these pocket parks, like in Detroit, were just, after a few years, just let go.
So that, that comes through your general ordinance, uh, the property maintenance standards, light, uh, and enforcement through that measure. Does the township do a mowing, if, you know, mowing or things of that nature?
I would do ordinance enforcement.
Okay. So it, there is that, um, potential and, and Detroit has struggled with it for sure.
So what, what would you like for us to recommend?
A good thought again was the, the size, any of the language that you want us to think about. The deed restriction point was a good point and I've written that down. And, and so I thought that, I, I think we can add that and again, work with Attorney Davis to get it into a position where he's comfortable with it, uh, from the legal side.
One other thought I had was, um, it says all pocket parks must close no later than ten P M. I would usually dot the dusk in our other parks here. I mean, unless it's an illuminated use where, you know, there's events taking place. I don't know why it reads strictly be ten P M.
I think that's a good point, especially with the way it's dark early in certain times than other times.
It's okay to be out there at ten o'clock and it does pitch black.
Yeah.
Can you certainly put that language in at that supply commission? See what the board's thoughts are.
I think that's, if we add that to your list.
Yeah, uh, size, do we want to put a size, one acre, two acres, what were you thinking?
The one property that we were talking about, um, I'm not sure if it's, I'll leave that sizing for.
Okay.
Are we talking maximum size or minimum size?
Maximum, I would think.
Like? Minimum.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, when size was brought up, I'm curious, are we talking maximum size or minimum size?
I think we're saying typically whatever acreage or less is defined to be a pocket park. Anything over that would be a regular park. And also I, I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at our park ordinance, as it stands now. But I, I think a recommendation to the board to ask us to, or whatever, start the process to look at our park ordinance might be something that we should do. There's not much in it.
Well, if it's going to be included in parks, I would.
Well, this is going to be standalone, as I understood, this is a separate ordinance. Um, but if we're looking at amendment, our actual park ordinance, or we get direction to do that, I'm not sure how that process starts, if it goes to the park committee or who, but our current park ordinance really only addresses watershed, it doesn't address any, anything else that would.
Anything else that we have.
And so that's under, um, chapter forty-six, which is a general ordinance. So the, uh, township board would have the, the, the final responsibility with that. And they could designate, uh, whether, whether it comes to this body for review or to the parks in their commission, or they could take it on themselves.
We could recommend that they, they do something. Right?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Is there any general, I mean, is there anybody that really says, okay, the minimum size should be two acres, maximum five acres for?
I have not seen that language. I can do some research and
It could be an acre, I mean, somebody donated some flower.
Well, a lot of times that's, like I said, that's how these things come about is, uh, family establishes a trust, uh, for their legacy and then either does a land lease or donates that land, uh, in the name of the trust to a municipality and you end up with these. Aside from those that are traditionally built within a site condominium development.
I mean, to me, generally speaking, I mean, two acres is a pretty big
Yeah.
pocket park. I mean, I would think it would be an acre or less, I would.
I mean, that's a. From my perspective, it's pretty much the parking lot. Uh, when you go up in front of this building, it would be just about two acres.
Right.
So I don't know that, you know, it, it's just when I read something that says small, I just feel like it needs a definition. I think we're relating this to a need and I'm not sure what that number is, so I was going to say whatever that need is or less. I mean, it doesn't really matter if it's five acres or less, we can call it a pocket park and say they're all allowed in our zoning districts. I mean, I, I love parks, so it's pretty easy.
I do too. I just think, most of them I've seen, like I said, in subdivisions, but there are municipalities where they have a place where they can put a little park for people, you know, to be, I guess, if you want to say it any other way, it's a downtown area, you know, so they put a little park there.
A pocket park could be a bench and a flower pot and one.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, I think with this being said too, I would be a little concerned about the low impact definition as well, like, you know?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to item D. Renewable energy.
So this is, um, one that we've been keeping an eye on. The act, uh, as passed will take effect on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. It is now in the hands of the Michigan Public Service Commission, um, uh, putting the rules in place on how the act is, is determined. And, and again, what we do know is those those alternative energy developments that are a hundred megawatts or more, whether it be winter solar, have the ability to have one hundred percent of the site and process done through the Michigan Public Service Commission, so it doesn't come here. And then I've, I've, I've heard varying opinions on the act is that if it's fifty megawatts or less, that there is incentive for the township to pass a continual, or a compatible renewable energy ordinance. And, and that gives the, uh, the township the ability to have some skin in the game and, and work with the developers to review it locally. And then if it goes sideways, then the developer can still then go back to the Michigan Public Service Commission ultimately. And then I've also heard in some instances that that could be as low as twenty megawatts. So until we see the rules, uh, from the Public Service Commission, which they're currently working on, as well as a, we're working with both Michigan Municipal League, the University of Michigan and the Michigan Township Association, to bring a, bring out a template continually renewable ordinance, uh, uh, I'm sorry, compatible renewable energy ordinance, that provides the townships with the most protection that they can get under the act. We haven't seen that yet. So we're not, uh, I don't have anything to put in front of you tonight other than an update, but we're still looking at it and we still have a sense of urgency to have something in place for the township within the relative next few months, uh, because we, either way, uh, we're, we're either going to get preempted by the state or we can protect ourselves. And, and that's kind of how we're looking at it. And if we're going to get preempted by the state, let's let the state take the responsibility and, and blame for, for the site and the bill that they put in place. But otherwise, if we can't protect township to the maximum extent where the township has local control, then let's do it. So we're just waiting on some guidance.
How much land are we talking about?
A hundred megawatt facility is going to be somewhere or see them as small as eight hundred acres all the way up to three thousand acres. A fifty megawatt facility is going to be somewhere around five to seven hundred acres. A twenty megawatt facility is going to be somewhere between a hundred and fifty and three hundred acres.
Do we have parcels of that size in Addison?
Not probably any single individual ownership, but in a lot of these cases, the developers are securing land leases for multiple owners and, and puzzling those pieces together.
That's a lot of farmland.
It is, it is, uh, though the development out in Shawnee County, I got a chance to tour that last summer. And they are, they're pushing twenty eight hundred acres, I believe. For the entirety of that development out there. The, the thing of it is, when, when I was out there, a lot of the communities put in landscaping requirements, berm requirements to try to hide these things, but the landscaping and the berm requirements that they put in changed the rural landscape more than the actual panels did themselves. When you're driving down a rural road, uh, that you're usually used to looking at a cornfield and you see a row of barber biberies over twenty feet, that's not rural. That's a landscape architect's ordinance, you know, so I, I think there are ways that they can be done for the communities that want them. But in this case, the, the state has kind of made their, made their intention clear. But in this case, the, the state has kind of made their, made their intention clear that I know some hundred megawatt systems or larger, they're going to say it.
What kind of ordinance would you, would we draft or think about in order to?
That's what we're waiting for the guidance on.
Okay, so we're still waiting?
Yeah.
Just because of the numbers that we're not sure about?
It's because they refer to it in the Act, again, what they consider to be a compat- a, a compatible renewable energy ordinance, local compatible renewable energy ordinance, which not only has to be adopted by the local community, but also the county. And, and they're requiring that the county, at least from what we've heard from, from legal experts at this point, is that the county and the local ordinance should be the same. Well, how often are the local townships and counties on the same page? And then on top of that, it needs to meet the minimum requirements for setbacks, sound, noise, lighting, height of what's in the state act. So essentially, they put it into legislation, what your ordinance needs to look like, what the county needs to adopt, and then tells you if you don't follow this, you don't get to cite it anyway. So it's.
So it's a mess.
It is, so we, we, we need, we just need some clarity from, anytime there's a new law that's created at the state, they go through what's called the rules-making process.
It's a law and land.
Which talks about how the law will be enforced and enacted. And we, we just need to understand what the Public Service Commission role is going to be in this, where we can have a say, where we don't have a say, and, and I know there are two very good attorneys, Judy Allen and I try to remember the other, at the Township Association, that are all over this. And as well as attorneys at the Michigan Municipal League, as well as attorneys with the Michigan County Association, as well as attorneys at the Michigan Municipal, not, the municipal leaders, the City Managers Association. So there, there are, pretty much every jurisdiction that's not the state is coming together right now to try to figure out what the compatible renewable energy ordinance looks like, and even if it's worth putting in place, because we don't know the rules.
You're just giving us a heads up to act fast when we do know.
Correct.
So being to take effect in November, is it kind of something that needs to be put at the front of the line here to get something to protect the township?
So what communities are doing at this point is putting moratorium in place to basically hold off all alternative energy development, to be able to put that in place to, to, to make sure that they, they have an ordinance that, that aligns with the Act. But, but the other piece of that is, is once the Act comes into effect, it prohibits moratorium. So now is the time to, now is the time to put it in place and work that out, and, and so again, it's kind of we're, we want, we want to play, we want to play poker, but we can't see our hand, you know? It's, so we're, we're focused on it, but I wanted to make sure you guys had an update on where we're at with it. So, any other comments?
Too much land.
Do we need a moratorium? We don't have anything on the docket, right? And if it does come, it's going to take a long time, so it probably.
You, you, you could, you could oppose one for six months, it would be a board action with a, with a drafting resolution from the attorney to put it in place, you know, at least for a utility scale. That, that wouldn't affect residential scale if somebody wanted to put panels on the roof or a couple of panels in their backyard. But you could put that in place, at least until the Act goes into effect.
Well, if it's going into an effect in November, wouldn't we be concerned if somebody was trying to do that now?
Now, they would have to follow a rules that are already on book, as far as site plan review, siting, the state has no say at this point.
It does say that.
Correct, correct. Now, if the, the rules aren't what the township wants, then, then again, I would say the moratorium is probably the best step going forward. The hard part about that is, is do you amend an existing ordinance now for protections for six months when you don't know what the, the final rules are going to be from the state, ultimately when they take over responsibility? So it's, like I said, it's like we're trying to play cards, but we can't see our hand, you know? We all have our cards facing each other, I can see your card, but I can't see my own.
And maybe the election will just erase all of that.
Well, and that, that is the other piece. So the ballot initiative, I don't know if you have had individuals here in Addison specifically, trying to get ballot signatures. I'm hearing as of last Friday, they only have another couple of weeks or so to get the number of signatures required, which I think is somewhere around five hundred fifty thousand, to get those submitted to be on the November ballot. That initiative, if it goes on the November ballot, will repeal these sections of the state statute that take away local zoning for siting. So there is, there is that possibility that the November election, if it's on the ballot, would, would repeal that. Otherwise, otherwise, we were stuck with the Act and what the ballot organizers, they're out of Minneway County. They said their goal was to get it on this November's election, but if they can't get it on this November's election, then they're going to wait till twenty twenty-six for the next gubernatorial election, just because they know it brings out more voters. Additionally, if the House and the Senate flip.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, if the House and the Senate flip, I would, I would highly anticipate a potential repeal of the Act. However, there is a lot of pressure from private entities and developers that are, that are trying to force these changes through, it's not coming from DTE or consumers. It's, it's purely private equity that's trying to push these bills through.
The ones that want to build it?
Yes.
Nice.
So.
So just stay tuned.
So do we wait till somebody shows their hand, or?
Uh, just, just know that we're, we're following them very closely. And as soon as I can bring you a draft or sample ordinance that has the blessing of, of the Township Association, then, then, then we will do so, but we, we don't want to wait till November twenty-ninth and be stuck without something.
Okay. Okay, the last item, on short-term rentals.
Correct, so last meeting we discussed creating a, or, or looking at, at the direction of the board, crafting some language around short-term rentals, deciding if there are districts that they're appropriate in, districts that they're not appropriate in, what would the regulation or the zoning language look like? And shortly after, we had that conversation, a number of bills, I think it's a package of six bills, were introduced and, and to the State House and are moving forward. They're not evidently going to be adopted in, let's say, next week or the next two weeks. But, but what I'm hearing is there's strong support for these bills from the Municipal League, Township Association, County Association, and City Managers. And, and essentially what it is saying is municipalities will have the ability to license and regulate short-term rentals in any way, shape, form that they choose, but they cannot enact an ordinance that outright prohibits them. It does not prescribe the number of short-term rentals that you would have to meet. So this board, in conjunction with the Township Board, if those bills were enacted, could have as few as one short-term rental in the community, as long as you meet the statutory requirements, and, and you would get to determine how those are licensed, how they are, whether or not they're a special land use, whether or not they're allowed in commercial or residential districts, that, that's all stuff that will be up to this body as well as the Township Board to, to determine. But when I spoke with Pauline about it, again, it didn't make sense, given the, the way that these are moving through the legislature at this point, I didn't want to spend the township's time and resources writing an ordinance that might just turn on and be upended in three to six months. If, if it didn't look like it wasn't going to pass this year, then I would say, yes, I could put an ordinance in front of you. But the, the bill is moving relatively quickly and the, and the main purpose of the bill was not to even provide zoning requirements, it was to require that all short-term rentals are taxed and assessed appropriately in accordance with similar properties that are lawfully currently permitted within the township, like bed and breakfasts or hotels and ends, that, that pay overnight accommodations, taxes, and fees. Where, where the short-term rentals right now, in some instances may or may not. So that, that's really, out of the six bills, five of them are related to taxation. So just the one piece that it told us is that a community cannot outright ban them, but you can determine how many licenses that you want, and it can be as low as one.
But it has to be licensed?
Yes. So that, that's where, that's where that's at. I don't want to sit too long on it, because right now, right now, we don't we don't permit short-term rentals under our ordinance. The way the ordinance is, is drafted in accordance with the Zoning Enabling Act is that we provide for all reasonable uses of property, so on residential district, that principal use is the residence or, or the dwelling, using that household for a dwelling. We don't say that you can, that you have to own it outright, or that you can't sublet it, but that's the principal use. Where, where short-term rentals are a little bit different is it's taking the opportunity to sublet your property and do it over and over and over and over again as a commercial operation. It's not a primary residential operation. Some communities have required through ordinance, and in some instances, it has been challenged, but some communities are required by ordinance, that any short-term rental has to be one hundred percent occupied by the principal owner at all times, meaning you're subletting a unit or space within that dwelling, but the primary use of the property, the principal use of the property is a dwelling. And, and so right now, we do allow within certain districts by special land use, an application process and an approval process for bed and breakfasts, which are similar short-term rentals, very similar. Somebody can come and stay at a bed and breakfast for one day, they can stay for two days, they can stay for twenty days, they can stay for a month. But it's through the special land use process. And, and the way your ordinance is, is right now, it is compliant with the Zoning Enabling Act, that, that you have to provide for permitted uses, principal uses. And, and you do provide in your commercial districts for bed and breakfasts, and you do in your residential districts allow for residential principal uses. So that opinion could be interpreted by the, the township's attorney, but I don't see any place right now where you would be in violation of not having short-term rentals listed as a primary principal use, because it's like I said, you already allow for bed and breakfasts, and you allow for residential use. Additionally, once we see that the, if the bills are going to go through and get approved through the House and the Senate, then we would work with you to essentially craft the application licensing process and, and how many licenses, and again, that would be in partnership with the Township Board, on whether it's one license for the township, ten licenses, twenty licenses, it's at your discretion. What I did recommend is that if it gets to that space where that law is enacted and you do determine a number of licenses, that the township hold a blind lottery. So if applicants, let's say, let's say, for example, the township says we're going to have ten licenses for short-term rental properties throughout the township, and you have forty people or property owners that want to apply for that. I think we have to have a very clear application process, a very clear set of standards, and do a blind sort of lottery where when that application becomes available, we, we let people know what day, when, and where, to have their applications completed, applications turned in with all their legal documents, and then the township can do a random drawing to determine fairly and unbiasedly how those licenses are, are issued. But that's all, that's all a discussion that we would have once those bills come into effect at this point right now.
Generally speaking, who's the enforcement people for that, I mean?
Uh, so again, the, under the, well, I guess, let me clarify, what, what type of enforcement is it the?
Well, to make sure people are, I mean, who is going to be in the, say, the Township Hall here, who's going to make sure the person is properly licensed?
So we have, we have the, the building department, so we, we do have folks here. Do you think that I would recommend it, and I would want, I, I, I would think that Attorney Davis would agree, is that if that bill comes to fruition and we do go to this licensing system and do come up with the regulations, that we do make it a special land use. And again, going back to our meeting a couple of months ago about the library, if you have a special land use, the use itself is only permitted by meeting the conditions of approval of that special land use. So at any point in time, if there are violations of those conditions, whether it be noise, whether it be light, whether it be disruptive behavior, any, any number of examples, a violation of the sound ordinance, you name it, that special land use can be revoked and then essentially the use is halted unless they decide to keep doing it illegally and then we go to court and all that good stuff.
Any questions? There, there. There's nothing you need from us, this was just.
No, this is just an update.
Okay.
And so again, it's one of those, similar to the renewable energy ordinance, we're watching it very close. I know I mentioned a little bit ago that I'm working on amendments to the Land Division Act, and there is the introduced Senate Bill four eighty that I'm also watching, which could have some significant impact in this community in regards to how land is divided and splits that are permitted. And, and we're working with, in this case, it's kind of funny, the Michigan Association of Plank, which I'm a member of the Law Committee, we have been bare-knuckles, knock them down, drag out with the Realtors Association over short-term rentals and how those are regulated. And we're in lockstep with each other, arm in arm, on how to handle these Land Division Act amendments, so it's kind of funny how it all works, but we're, we're all trying to get to some resolution very soon.
If nobody has any further questions, we'll move on to item three, future planning commission training. And I guess what we're looking for, if anybody has any recommendations of what we need or what you would like to have some training in, that we can make a list and.
So I did send a training presentation for the township to look at, and, and I know at the last meeting that we had, we wanted to make sure that we had a full board to kind of discuss what some of those topics were. Some of the topics we did talk about were renewable energy, specifically special land use, site plan review. And, and so for me, we're, we're happy to craft the training we're, we're happy to craft the training and include any specific topics. The question that was, I guess, most important for me is, what are those topics that are most important to you as a body that you would like to have some training on? And then do we want to set a time to, to schedule that training?
Do you like to kind of have us, Justin, kind of limit it to like maybe three items?
Could, could I share that PowerPoint with them? Or?
Right now?
Not right at the minute. I, I was just going to say if I could distribute it to them, email it to them, and, and see if maybe we could get some email comments back within a week or so on any other topics or would that be, would that be okay?
Well, I don't really see what you're going to train them on, but sure, you could just read it.
Yeah, that's it.
Well, didn't we send something up?
It's actually really good.
So I, I could go, I can, I'll.
Did I already send it to you guys?
Yeah.
Oh, see, I already sent it.
Oh, so you saw, so you got the part now? Okay, so that was really what I wanted to, see if you had any feedback on that. And, and if that was, if that looked like a good, good enough training for you, covering habits, or is there additional topics that you really wanted to, to comment on and do a deep dive into?
I might appreciate something much broader and very general, being new to the board.
Okay, so this, this session is very, it covers roles and responsibilities, talking about staff, Township Board, Planning Commission, ZBA, goes through statutory and, and supporting legislation, how decisions are made, how the master plan and zoning ordinance work together, what the structure of the zoning ordinance is, uses of land, and what the Zoning Enabling Act states. Talks about site plan reviews, special land uses, planning and developments, which we're going to be taking out here soon. Non-conformities, that's a, that's a good discussion to have. What are non-conformities? How rezonings are, are considered, spot zonings, conditional rezonings, how to update the zoning ordinance. So those are all topics in there, that's pretty.
Sounds like it, company.
All right. So then we could, we could look to, I will broaden this out a little bit and, and tailor it to the township. This, the example I sent you is for a village, and there are some differences between how townships and villages are zoned, so.
One other thing I would like us to cover is, I'd like to get training, but also along the same lines, I'd like to get, there's some ordinances that we have on the books that need updated and tweaked a little bit, and I would like for us to work on those also.
Sure. And I know we've been working on, working on some of that and bringing, bringing, we're, we're trying to get the law hanging fruit right now and, and handle the easy fixes. We're also going to get to a point with the master plan where, again, your review period is going to be approaching, and, you know, are there conditions or changes to that master plan? Do you want to amend the bulk of the ordinance before and then draft the master plan to the ordinance? Or do you want to make at some point changes to the master plan and then amend the ordinance to the, to the master plan? So those are, those are just things to, to think about.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Nope.
Okay. If that's the case, we'll open up for public forum, if anybody from the public would like to make a statement here. You have, you have three minutes, so step up to the podium, give your name.
Thank you, I'm Ernest Kershaw. I'm Ernest Kershaw, I'm from this area. Correct, I'm from Oxford High. I own a house in a duplex on a single lot that's right next to the Lakeville Station. And maybe I sent a Pauline letter, I think she sent it on to you guys. It's right next to the bar, it's a rental, I have, so three rentals there, a duplex and a house that are rentals. And it's, I bought it for short-term rental, because there was no zoning or ordinance against it. And then when I renovated the house and I got my occupancy permit, it said, no Airbnb rental. And when I asked the building inspector at the time, I'm like, what is, what's, what's the definition of short-term? And I had none, and is there any other, any other Realtors that can't lease my property besides Airbnb? And he's like, uh, no, you know, I don't know that. So I, I, it's really kind of, because it's next to a bar, it's a rental, it's, I, nobody wants to live out here. I have people from Detroit that want to come down here and just for a place to live, you know, even though it's on the lake. If I could do short-term rental, I think Amy across the lake has her house for a short-term rental that shows on Airbnb. Her rents are six times what mine are for long-term, you know? And the, the quality of the tenants are, you know, they're, they're great, they're professional people, educated people that want to come down to the lake for a week, a month, or whatever, summer. So if you could do something for me in my piece of property where it's zoned commercial already, next to a bar and grill, so that I can rent it out, you know, thirty days at a time? Three weeks at a time? I don't know, something so that I can break even on it rather than renting it to people from with low, low-paying jobs to just for a place to live. I could be able to take care of the place better, look nicer, and I'd have better tenants. So this thing about parties and all that with short-term rentals, I have, I have ten rentals total. So in, in the U.P., I have a four-unit apartment building, one is a Airbnb, and nice people are there. Never had a party, never had any problems or anything. I have my fraternity brother there that's on-site, takes care of it. I have a, in Phoenix, I'm from Phoenix, I flew in today for this meeting so that I could talk to you guys. I have a condo near my house that I do Airbnb rental, thirty-day minimum. Never had a party, never had a problem, always traveling professionals, people from Canada or Minnesota coming there for the winter to stay for a month or two or three. So if there's something you guys could do to help me out with my property over there, for the intent that I bought it, I bought it for short-term rental, I'd really appreciate it. When, when the building inspector saw I was renting it short-term, he pulled my occupancy permit. So one summer I made a little bit of money, and then now I have all long-term, all long-term tenants. So if you can help me out there, I'd really appreciate it. Ernest Kershaw, I'm from the area, spend the summers here with my kids, so I'll probably see you guys this summer. Thank you.
Okay, then there's nobody else. Form, any commissioner reports?
Hearing none.
Hearing none. Listen for a motion to.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?